All right. Next item of business is the annulation of the school committee. We have three positions that we need to fill, chairman, vice chairman, and secretary roles. Just briefly, the chairman role is the one that tries with help to set the agendas for each meeting. The vice chair fills in when the chairman is not available. And the secretary is responsible for taking the minutes during executive meetings usually.
Which is very fun.
Yeah. So if there are any, not any questions in regard to the roles, and then after we've done that, there will be subcommittee and liaison assignments. You've received a copy of those. If we're able to work through those tonight, great. If not, we'll try to work through those, or we should work through those by the next meeting. So do I hear a nomination for chairman?
I nominate Don Myers to continue as chair of the Mashpee School Committee.
Second.
Do I have any other nominations? Hearing none, how do you vote, Nicole?
Aye.
Yes.
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Yes, okay. And I guess I can vote for myself, so it'll be unanimous. Thank you. I appreciate the vote of confidence and look forward to another year. I'm looking for nominations then for vice chair. I'll make a nomination for Chris Santos to serve as vice chair for the coming year.
I second that motion.
Okay. Do I have any other nominations? Hearing none, Nicole, how do you vote?
Yes.
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 And so that's unanimous.
Thank you.
All right. And last, I'm looking for a nomination for secretary. All, since I don't hear anyone speaking up, I will nominate Jeff Gorman as secretary.
I'll second, and congratulations.
Do I have any other nominations for secretary? Hearing none, Nicole, how do you vote?
Yes.
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 I'll, I want to say no about it, I guess.
All right.
Just kidding, thank you for the nomination.
All right. So that was unanimous, so we have our officers set for this school year. The, the only committee that I believe has an upcoming meeting, and correct me if I'm wrong for anyone who's currently on this, on our committees, is the negotiation committee, which may have a meeting coming up this week.
Tomorrow, I believe.
Yeah. I would suggest that we maintain the current committee structure, or subcommittee structure, at least for now, and if we want to change it, we can change it later. But we're in the middle of negotiations with Unit A, and I think the continuity would make sense at this point. And then we'll figure out the, if people will think about the other committees that they are on or have been on. And please let me know if you're interested in continuing, if you want to change, and then we'll set those at our next meeting. Is that okay with everybody?
Yep.
Does that include the liaisons, too?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. I think the health advisory has a committee meeting coming up between now and our next meeting. I'm not positive.
So I would suggest that.
I'll vote with.
That if you're currently on a committee that has a meeting between now and the next meeting, you continue it. I know Scott was on the planning and construction meeting, or construction committee, and the Cape Cod Collaborative. I don't know when, I know they meet on Wednesday, is that correct, once a month?
Can I offer, I, that was one thing that I was hoping to fill Scott's shoes for.
Okay.
So if you want to make, if we can make that assignment, that way I can find out when the next meeting is, and I'm not sure if it's before our next meeting or not.
I can answer that question.
Okay.
So the meetings are on the second, second Wednesday of each month at five o'clock at the Collaborative in Osterville, and the next meeting is June 14th.
Okay. You, you good with that, Jeff?
I'm down, I'm ready.
Okay. So Nicole will go ahead and assume that for now.
Chairman, one note.
Yes.
The Mashpee Cares assignment on here, I'm sure it still exists, but we haven't had a meeting in a long, long time. To be honest with you, I'm not 100% sure if it still exists. I know there was a couple of things that broke off of it. I know George is on, is it the?
Yeah, I would suggest we possibly switch to the Mashpee Substance Use Task Force.
Exactly, yeah. Because the Mashpee Cares hasn't really, we haven't met or done anything in a long time.
It's pretty much taken over the task force.
Yeah. Exactly. So we might want to fill that in, and George is already currently part of that.
Okay.
Assuming you want to remain.
There's a meeting for that tomorrow.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's the subcommittee on the.
Take back?
Yes.
I mean, drop in?
Drop in. Sub, it's not the full committee, it's just the subcommittee.
But are you on the subcommittee?
Yes.
Okay. So, I think that does make sense unless anyone objects. Well, I don't. Think about, I guess, the remaining ones that we have open then between now and the next meeting, okay? All right. The next item is public comment. Doesn't look like our public is commenting tonight, so.
I'm on this side of the table now.
I wonder why it's so quiet. We should do this more often.
Yeah.
Move them to this side of the table. All right. Seeing no public comment, next item is acknowledgements. In your packet is an email from a parent. Patty, I believe, are you going to read that?
Sure. So the email was written to Principal LaBelle and also to myself from a parent. "I just wanted to take a few minutes to express my gratitude for two of your staff members. My daughter is in Ms. Cogswell's kindergarten class. She recently developed some separation anxiety and anxiety with unknown events. Mrs. Cogswell has been so great and goes above and beyond to talk through these times and give her words of encouragement. Nurse Stacy has also been key in helping her cope with this. When I saw her walking with her yesterday with Cassie, who is the dog, it just illustrated the understanding and patience they have with her. It is so heartwarming to know that my daughter is being educated, cared for, and we are all working towards the same goal of giving her tools she needs to get through those feelings and grow out of this. Also, I just wanted to say that I think my daughter has gotten a tremendous education this year. She is reading, writing. You don't want to know how many times we had to erase and rewrite her S on her work last night, lol. Understanding math and has developed a love of science. We sent my son, he is now 12, to St. Margaret's for kindergarten and has gotten, and our daughter has gotten a far superior education in both the classroom and the school experience in general. You guys are doing a great, you are, you guys are doing great work, and the staff I have encountered at KCC has been nothing short of fabulous. In my position at work, we far too often hear the negatives of our staff, so I wanted to take this opportunity to let you know the great work that is being done there, and people are noticing." So, that was nice.
Very nice. So I think this is, what, two meetings in a row, or three that we've had?
So we'll have to send out an email, keep them coming, that's right.
All right. Next item is introduction of the new assistant superintendent.
Sure.
This way we get you on the video. And maybe in the newspaper.
She gets to pick the photo.
I know. Let's just make that clear.
All right. So, "It is my pleasure to officially introduce Dr. Hope P. Hanscom to the Mashpee community. Hope is joining our Mashpee family as our next assistant superintendent. Hope's extensive education, broad range of work experience, communication skills, and positive personality will help us to make our already outstanding school district even better. Hope received her bachelor's degree from Holy Cross, her master's degree in special education and reading from Dowling College, her certificate of advanced graduate study in educational leadership from Bridgewater State University, and her doctorate from Northeastern University. She has worked in public schools for the past 20 years as a substitute teacher, a paraprofessional, a teacher, a coordinator, a director, and currently as the assistant superintendent for the student services at the West Bridgewater Public Schools. Dr. Hanscom helped write a grant, the grant, that allowed a public recovery high school called Independence Academy to open in Brockton, and she continues to serve on Independence Academy's advisory board. She is a member of the MASSS Professional Development Committee and provides professional development across Massachusetts on many topics, including behavioral health, assessment, collaboration, and special education compliance. Hope believes that all children can learn and that it is our job as educators to personalize classroom experiences to meet each student at his or her individual launching point. In her past roles, Hope has been successful in promoting educator creativity and providing educators with an array of tools to help them meet the varied needs of her students. Colleagues describe Hope as diligent and persistent in her efforts to provide the best educational opportunities for student, a clear and honest communicator, respectful in all interactions, a consensus builder, dedicated and hardworking, always accessible and available, and someone who promotes collaboration and collegiality. I am confident that Dr. Hope P. Hanscom will prove herself to be a highly effective and valued member of the Mashpee Public Schools, and when asked why it's great to be in Mashpee, I will be adding Hope's name to my answer list."
That is Dr. Hope Hanscom. Would anyone like to ask any questions?
I feel like I'm on This Is Your Life or something. Like my parents are going to come out.
I just want to say, congratulations. It's an honor to have someone with your background and credentials join the Mashpee Public Schools, and having seen you as a parent, interacting with the teachers and the administration, I think it's a, from my perspective, a wonderful addition to our school system. So thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any comments they want to make?
It's great to see you here. I know we had a great interaction during the superintendent search this past fall. Appreciate all of your input and delighted that you're here with us.
Thank you very much.
Very well said.
You good, Nicole?
I just want to add to that list of credentials, fun, smart, humane. So I'm so happy to be looking across this table at you. I can't, it's going to be a fun three years for me. Thank you. I really am, it's like incredibly nice, and I'm very, very glad I brought my son and my husband with me, so they can hear it, because, you know, sometimes they might not feel the same way. Thank you, and I'm so, I can't even tell you how excited I am about this. It's hard for me to imagine not working in West Bridgewater where I've been for so long and so happy, but this is really the only place I can imagine going from such a wonderful place that I've been. And I am really, really looking forward to working with all of you, and, and I can't wait for August 1st, so, thanks, thank you.
Jeff, I didn't mean to.
Oh, sorry, Jeff, I forgot.
Exclude you.
I can't be helped anyway.
Okay, good. I look great. Well, nice to meet you, Jeff, so, all right, thank you.
Thanks, thank you.
Next is the introduction of the new special education director.
I just want to say, I do feel like I've won the lottery with the two people that were adding to our leadership team, so I'm super excited about that. So, this may sound a little similar, but just as meant. So this is Jamie L. Curley, she is, and it's my pleasure to introduce her. She, Jamie is joining our Mashpee family as our next director of special education services. Like Hope, Jamie also has extensive education, a broad range of work experiences, strong communications skills, and a positive personality that I believe will greatly enhance the teaching and learning that takes place in the Mashpee Public Schools. Jamie earned a Bachelor of Arts degree from the University of Massachusetts Amherst, a Master's degree in education, and a certificate of advanced graduate study in school psychology, both of those degrees from the University of Massachusetts at Boston. Jamie participated in the National Institute for School Leadership, the NISSIL program, and has completed all but her dissertation for her Doctorate of Education in Educational Leadership, which she expects to have completed by this August. Her dissertation focuses on turnaround schools. Jamie began her career in Barnstable as a teaching assistant in a self-contained special education classroom. She then joined the Dennis Yarmouth School District as a special education teacher at the high school. After earning her CAGs, Jamie became the school psychologist and team chairperson at the Station Elementary, Station Avenue Elementary School in Dennis Yarmouth. She held this position for seven years, and during this time, she also coordinated the extended school year program for the district. In the fall of 2013, Jamie transferred to the Dennis Yarmouth Regional High School to serve as the school psychologist and team chair there. She has also served as a lead mentor for the district, providing guidance to mentors and also providing training to teachers interested in becoming mentors. In July of 2015, she was appointed to the position of Director of People's Services for the Dennis Yarmouth Regional School District, a position which she currently holds. Mrs. Curley was instrumental in the development of a behavior coach model at the elementary level in DY. She has also attended the Special Education Leadership Institute. In 2016, Jamie was appointed as an executive board member for Children's Cove Child Advocacy Center, and she remains on that board. Jamie has worked in the Dennis Yarmouth Regional School District for the past 18 years. Her colleagues describe her as collaborative, caring, a problem solver who can think outside the box and make informed decisions, contemplative, reflective, conscientious, dependable, a person who demonstrates an outstanding commitment to her work with and for children, steadfast, patient, detail-oriented, a dedicated professional, intuitive, smart, a person with a great sense of humor, an attentive listener, always available, approachable, and a person who takes action and follows through. I'm confident that Jamie will also prove herself to be a highly effective and valuable member of the Mashpee Public Schools, and again, she will be on my list of when I'm asked why it's great to be in Mashpee. I'm very grateful that both of these outstanding educators and leaders have chosen to become part of our MPS team, a group of highly skilled and dedicated professionals who work hard on a daily basis to ensure that each student achieves to his or her greatest potential. So welcome to Mrs. Curley. Glad to have you.
Thank you.
So, thank you. I appreciate you coming here tonight. Once again, I think I'll show up in the, in the local newspaper, so, yeah. I appreciate your candid and thoughtful answers during the interview process. I probably grill people a little bit too much at times, but as you'll find out, you know, I Google questions off the internet, so I have an endless supply.
You're not supposed to Google things off the internet.
To shut up, so, anyway. Congratulations again, and welcome.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any comments?
Well, I purposely just wanted to wait until both were done to say something, but obviously I just met you at the interview, and I do say for both of you that, you know, it's nice to have very good, strong, intelligent leaders coming into the district, especially that, you know, filling the shoes that both of you are filling in your roles. I can't say enough about, you know, how glad I am that we're able to find such, such great candidates, and, you know, I look forward to, you know, what we can do in the next few years.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I would only add that us, us newbies can get oriented together, so as you make your way around, give me a call so I can tag along for anything that you, that you're sitting in on. Welcome.
Thank you.
And I'm sure someone or two hope will find out that you're fun and all of those other things.
No, I said she was fun. They said that.
I didn't hear.
Good sense of humor.
Good sense of humor.
Although I think Hope might be a tough act to follow. She's super fun.
Well, we're a collaborative group, so I'm sure you'll learn. Congratulations, and thank you again for coming tonight.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
And I'm, I'm very excited about this opportunity to join the Mashpee team. And the visits that I did a couple of weeks ago, I was really impressed with all the engaged students and all the classrooms that I saw, and I'm really excited to be a part of this, so thank you very much.
You're welcome. All right. Next item of business is approval of the minutes.
I move to approve the school committee meeting minutes of May 10th, 2017, as written.
I will second.
All right. And Nicole, just for your purposes, you would abstain since you were not present at that meeting? Okay? So, Jeff, any comments on the minute? Okay? Hearing no comments, do I have a, and I have a motion to approve them. How do you vote, Nicole?
I abstain.
Abstain?
Yes.
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 Followed direction.
Four, four, one abstention. All right. That Robert's.
Trying to get me on that one, Don, I saw that.
All right. Next item is the report of the business manager. Paul?
I do have some questions from the chairman, and I did have some questions from Mr. Santos, and I did respond to Chris's questions, and, but I will go over those. So we're going to go through, this is to close out, closing out the budget. As you know, fiscal year '17 is almost, another month, it'll be almost closed out. One of the questions, I'll go through, one of the questions is how much money we're going to have to, to need to close out our salary account, because as you know, we had a $215,000 payout this year on a settlement. And we will, we are looking at, and I'll make the transfer right at the last meeting, it looks like it's going to be $40,000 that we'll have to take from the expense side to the other side, to the salary side. And the reason why we, we didn't have to transfer a large amount, we did not fill, if you remember, we did not fill the assistant superintendent's position. That was $109,000. The second piece was, we did not have the retirees that we expected, so they, there were a number of them that pushed off to their birth dates in the next fiscal year, which, which puts an impact on fiscal year '18. When I get to the buybacks, the buybacks, I believe, were $43,000, so we did have excess funds there. So as I, as I go through, there were a couple of other questions on the salary side, and I'm going to hit those. The district, the other district tuitions have been encumbered. When we get to that, there is a balance there. You notice, $82,318.53, I'll be transferring that to cover the Chromebooks that we talked about at the last finance meeting. And I'll be giving you a kind of a picture of where we want to expend the rest of the month. The way I usually do things, before I get into page by page, and I extended it this year to basically, almost made for us, it was after the April vacation, and I finally say to the administrators, okay, it's time to close out everything, and anything that's left, we're going to just kind of combine it, and this is, you know, we'll look for areas to extend, extend it, such as the clear touches we're trying to replace, as many of the E boards and the.
Smart boards. Smart boards.
Smart boards, thank you. In the next, as we can in this year, because next year's budget is very, very tight. As you know, we were reduced by $425,000, and I don't want to get into '18, I'm just trying to get through '17 now, but we may have a discussion on that. So as I move through the budget, a, a, a couple of other questions, I'll, I'll cover those when I get to athletics. On the Coombs, there are a few deficits there at this time of the year. If I, all I look to our, is bottom line, and you'll notice that school's expended just about everything they have, they're down to $363. As you move on to the question, the question was, these are one-time, usually one-time expenditures, the general supplies, if that's a one-time expenditure, usually they do not go over on their supply. Again, looking at the bottom line, they only have $822 left. The high school, and, and the principal, I, we had a conversation as we get into March, April, and, and the beginning of May, asking him if there's anything that they, that he needed. He did have some textbooks, which he encumbered the money, but he said after that, you know, and I, I kept asking him, so you can see that he has $20,316, and some of that money is going to get transferred, and I'll talk about that when I get to that particular point, because there were a couple of questions on some of the, one of them was on maintenance at the high school, and I'll talk about that. There was a $6,050, $6,050 encumbrance. If you look down Principal's other, that's the graduation expenses that are coming up. We encumbered them at the beginning of the year, to make sure that we have that money at the end of the year, so we can have a very nice graduation. And you can, if anyone, if there's a page that you have a question, please start me, or if you want to go back to something else, fine, too. There was a question on page nine, other expenses, that's for the, the principals are that they use that money for promotional things, such as the high fives. The principal, the prior principal here at the cautionet had these tickets that they used to pass out for good behavior. I, I never got any. Go ahead.
I guess the question on that, Paul, was, it seems like there was a fairly substantial balance left?
At the, at the middle school?
At the middle school.
Correct. And those balances, as I said, at the end of the year, we, you know, you call kind of a, okay, it's game over, let's, let's take all of that, and let's decide what we're going to do with it, rather than just spend it on a lot of little things that we possibly wouldn't need. And, you know, I always ask, the, one thing in Mashpee that I find is, the prin, I ask the principals constantly, is there anything that you need that you're not getting, either in your supplies or your instructional equipment? And they'll come back and tell me, and if I, if we have to move money or whatever, we try to accommodate them. But if, if you ask the principals, unless they're lying to me, they have never said that they didn't get what they need here. And, you know, I always go back, that there's no user fee. And, you know, I always go back, that there's no user fees, you know, we give the principals and the administrators what they need to do their jobs. So, basically, and then at the end of the year, then we decide what we're going to do with those small excess amounts. And so, yeah, the middle school and the high school, they have the larger balances. Coming over to the next page, the volunteer supplies, next month, you're going to see that, that, we have a volunteer luncheon, we have volunteers that come in, we have a volunteer lunch, and we try to do a nice little flowers or whatever, and give them a nice luncheon. Also on that line item, and it really doesn't, probably should have a different title, is that a badge machine that makes these badges just went, it's like fifteen, I think, it's like thirteen or fifteen years old, and it was a rebuild when we bought it, so I've authorized them to buy another machine, so that'll come in the next. And again, I look at bottom line there, it'll cover the cost of the machine. The professional development, the Quasnet assistant principal, these are, this is their contractually, this is the money that we use for the principals and the assistant principals as far as their professional development. As we move into, are there any questions? Nicole, jump right in.
Mm-hmm, I'm good.
Okay, go ahead, John.
So, did we budget the contractual amount? So, I'm looking, I'm looking at the middle school development.
Middle school, right.
So...
That's assistant principal only.
Right. So, we budgeted 1,500, we're expending 2,500s?
Right.
So, was the 1,500 the contractual amount?
Correct.
So, we're spending more than the contractual?
Right, right. A lot of times, they do. They'll go to a conference that's authorized by the superintendent.
Okay.
And again, you know, as we, as we get through this, if you turn to the next page, and we come over into the total professional development. The total professional development, I know there were some questions, this covers unit A, B, if they go over, and C, which is, which are the paraprofessionals and the secretary. And I believe the paraprofessionals have, again, with approval of the superintendent, $100.
But doesn't that total, then, also include the individual amounts on page, page 11?
The bottom line?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, the total, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, oh, yeah, that's all one, it's all one section.
So, that, that, because my question was, what you just talked about, was whether that covered the union contracts, and I had an idea of what those were, and, you know, the excess or the difference in his individual contract?
Yeah, it covers everything. The balance, the $17,056 balance is what's left out of everything. That's the total professional development.
So, so at this point, you've encumbered the contractual amount?
No, no, no. We only encumber when we expend, and I'd have to break those out. Well, let me, let me go first to the, I'd have to go back and pull out everything in the, with that, the $29,055, that could be a number of professional development. I'll tell you, I can tell you what it is, I'm sorry. That's the ISTI conference that we're sending, that's part of it, that's the big portion of it. They go the end of June, so we encumber their hotel, their registrations, the transportation, meals, so that's all in the $29,000. The $32,151, that's the pool.
Right.
So, that's the pool. So, those are the two big figures there. And the $12,000 is for the paraprofessionals, I do put a figure in there. If we don't use it, we'll use it someplace else at the end of the year. Now, you have to remember that those, what you see on the principals and the assistant principals on the preceding page, that's their conferences and made their courses and so forth. But if they, a lot of times, they'll go on a RTI to Denver, Milwaukee this year, but Denver, Salt Lake, okay, I was in the, I was close. So, we, that's above and beyond their professional development.
Okay.
Hey, can I take a moment?
Yeah, sure, go ahead. I can hear you.
Your party interrupted, your party interrupted.
The what?
Your party interrupted.
Go ahead, Jeff.
Go ahead.
Nobody staring at you. Going back to page 11, we were talking about the middle school assistant principal, and I can't talk to you and read at the same time, so forgive me if I miss it. I don't want to bang my drum again, but this is exactly the kind of stuff that I was talking about before, where I don't understand why we would spend money above and beyond the budget when we know the budget is $500. If $500 isn't enough, and you have to send somebody somewhere for $2,000, they don't go.
Well, we can, you can set that policy, that would mean that they could not go on any of these RTI, this ISTI, I'd have to pull all that back, because that's not in their contract. So, this is professional development, and it's authorized, you know, it has to be approved by the superintendent. It's not that, I'm making the...
I understand that, and I'm not trying to pick on professional development, but this is the, this is the drum that I've been beating since we, you know, we had this discussion with the, with the town, is that, you know, for the same reason that the school committee didn't go to Denver this year, our budget was $3,600 for professional development, it was going to cost $10,000. I mean, I just don't, I don't get why there's such a pushback, because the mindset was shift a little bit, that it's not in the budget, we don't...
Yeah.
So, Jeff, if you can hear me, what I look at is the contractual amount for assistant principals is for their choice of, you know, furthering their own learning and experiences. I do approve those, but there are sometimes district-wide initiatives that we decide we want to send them on or send them to, which is sort of more prescribed by me. So, it's not necessarily part of that 1,900, that's more of a personalized amount, that you can see, they obviously don't usually spend them, and then we send them on things.
But correct me if I'm wrong, the system-wide special development is over by $29,000 as well.
You said the system-wide PD was over by $29,000? No.
I'm sorry, $10,000.
$13,000, positive.
Yeah.
I'm not going to, I'm not going to waste a bunch of time, because it's probably very hard to choose.
Total, the total, the total professional development has a balance of $17,56.45.
So, on page 12, Jeff?
So, on page 12, about the middle of the page.
He's looking at that one line item, though. The second one.
Oh, the second line item?
Uh-huh.
Yeah.
Yeah, that did go over. But you notice, at this time of the year, again, I tend to look to bottom lines in each of the sections. I'd be more than...
I'm doing, I'm beating my drum again, you can move on. Thank you, Paul.
Moving on to page 13.
Were you going to talk about the information technology?
Oh, yes, thank you, thank you, thank you. The information technology, these, we had bought Chromebooks for the KCC, they've already been bought, they're encumbered there. We had bought, we're in the process of buying iPads. I'd have to get you a list of everything that's incorporated in there. But we had talked about these at the previous meetings, and I am going to make a transfer, because that is in a negative. You notice the bottom line there? I'll be making a transfer later on tonight of $80,000 to cover that.
So, what was unanticipated about those expenses?
Well, first of all, the town would, they were unanticipated, they weren't so much unanticipated. This is where, the end of the year, we tend to look at our needs. And in that particular case, our technology, that's what the schools are kind of...
Oh, I see, so you've already encumbered the money, but I see.
Yeah, see, the money is in the...
That's why it looks so negative.
Yes, yeah. In other words, those purchase orders have already gone out.
Gotcha.
So, they'll, I'm sure the Chromebooks are already here, or if they're not, they're going to be here in the near future.
Understood.
But a good point while we're on this page, if we budget for certain things, and like the out-of-district, that's where the money is going to come up, come from. We have to project if a town goes to an out-of-district placement. An out-of-district placement can cost anywhere from 200, anywhere from $40,000 to $200,000, even higher, if it's a residential. So, what we try to do is, what I try to do there is determine who's going out guaranteed, and then try to project who's on the, who might go out. And when I get to the, that section, I'll go over it in detail. But I don't take everyone that they have on the list, because it would inflate the budget really high. So, I try to, the sped director and myself try to pick and choose the ones that are right on the cusp of heading out. We budget for those. We do have excellent programs here in Mashpee. If we keep the students here, that's going to leave surplus funds there, and that's what we use to go out and buy. And that helps not only the special needs students, because they're going to have benefit from these, but also the regular end students.
So, Paul, at this point... Does every grade now have Chromebooks? What's the coverage?
They will, I believe they will.
Well, the, at the Coombs School, it's going to a one-to-two ratio, where they're going to share one set of Chromebooks between two classes. Prior to this last order upstairs, anyway, they were sharing, they had three carts for like 12 classrooms, and it really was challenging. As they get more and more comfortable using it, the teachers are finding it very difficult to share.
Okay.
So, we're headed down that road, just to let you know, there may be more due purchases.
Okay, so, so we're getting there, and Quasnet on up, everyone has one.
It's a one-to-one.
Okay, all right, we'll get there eventually. All right? Keep going.
Moving on, the high school supplies, and again, you notice they spent down, the nursing section is one whole section. That's, and you noticed they're down to $321.73. Now, the reason, there's two reasons there, but that's over. You know, we have a grant with Montemoy Regional School District, we have a nursing grant, and what we do is, we build them and they'll, out of this, it's a combination grant, a lot of the money comes in after the fiscal year, so it eventually goes back to the town. But those two items that are driving that, the $25,000, I'm going $25, $2,591, it's a Powerhot G3 Plus AED, you know, the hot, and the fibrillators, and a cardiac science unit G3 plus that must go with that. The Powerhot was $1,522.35, and the cardiac science unit G3 Plus was $1,707.
So, was that a replacement or an addition, or what?
I don't, again, I'd have to, I can't answer that, I'd have to ask the nurse. I assume that it's an addition.
I thought you said an addition, but I can't remember.
Yeah, I think, I believe it's an addition.
Because I thought we had devices at every school.
We do.
They needed to have an additional one.
But I think they needed another one.
Oh, was it?
Request was for another one.
Okay.
And they had the fund, you know. Again, I don't get into the specialties, you know, I leave that up to the nurses. So, you know, they're spent down there, and I believe that that was a good purchase.
Okay, thank you.
And I talked about the grant. Hopefully, we will get some funds then, and if we do, we'll expend them.
Okay.
Sped transportation, is this the expected balance at the end of the year? It'll be possibly larger at the end of the year, the sped balance. We encumber the money based on projections, again, on our out-of-districts, and we didn't send the students out to the out-of-districts, so we will have some funds there. And, you know, I look at that, that was where I was looking at the funds to cover the $215,000. So, there will be substantial funding there that we can expend on some of the items that are not, and I'll, while I'm on it, I might as well talk about the transportation. There will be additional funding, because we'll be able to unencumber some of the funds that we had encumbered for the sped out-of-districts and in-districts. But there are a couple of areas that we are going to go into the deficit, so we'll be moving some. And one is the preschool, we're going to a deficit of, we had budgeted 105, and we needed 110, so we're short 5,000, but it's within that sped budget. McKinney-Vento, that keeps getting higher and higher. Besides the $6,017, it looks like we're going to need another $11,000 on 10-5. So, that's going to go 53, so that's going to be $63,000, $65,000 from McKinney-Vento this year. And there's talk now, you know, I heard the, I believe it was the assistant superintendent set up these regional high schools, the one in Brockton?
Independence.
The what?
Oh, the Independence and Recovery High School.
The Recovery Academy?
Yeah.
And if we have students go there, we're going to have to supply the transportation. That's coming down the road, just so you know. You're going to see transportation just going. I am renegotiating...
I'm sorry, can you repeat that, Paul? I missed it.
Sure. If you heard earlier, the assistant superintendent was involved with this independent...
Independence Academy.
Independence Academy, which is a school in Brockton that they're setting up, I assume it's a high school, and coming down the pike is, we're going to have to supply the transportation if we have a student go there. So, that's going to be, that's going to be costing. I am working with the Collaborative on the in-district transportation, the in-district sped transportation, to restructure that, to save us some money. So, that will be one of the places that I hope we'll have some money next year. We're in the process of restructuring that, we're trying to, we're banging heads a little, but we'll get there, we'll get an agreement together, and it will save us some money. And the in-district, the in-district sped buses, next year, we'll have Mashpee Public Schools on the side, rather than Cape Cod Collaborative.
Oh, good.
Okay, so, and I told him he's got to get, polish it up real nice. Coming on to athletics, on the officials, we've still got some games and state tournaments. You'll notice, again, I look at, I know one of the questions on the front page, the other, I believe, I'll have to get back to you on that, why, why it's in deficit. But again, looking at the bottom line, we spend everything in the appropriation before we go into the revolving account. So, right now, we still have officials, and the athletic transportation is at a minus $742.20, and the athletic director has informed me, as you know, we leased a van from the Collaborative, an activity van that we... And the athletic director has informed me, as you know, we leased a van from the collaborative, an activity van that we not only use for athletics, we use to transport high school students to, down here to Quashnet, to work with our STEM programs. That van is, we're halfway through the lease, at the end of the lease, it becomes ours. The only thing I'd have to pay the collaborative for is the insurance, so that will be a huge savings in another year and a half. And that has saved us a tremendous amount of money in transporting, because the small teams, the small teams like the tennis team, JV basketball, golf, they all use that, rather than rent a big yellow bus like we used to. We also, another reason why the transportation is, has really looked good this year, we haven't even moved into really the revolving account, is that the collaborative is doing transportation, and of course, since they're our buses, as I call them, our buses, that I have got down to where they just pay the driver's hourly rate, plus, I believe it's sixty-eight cents a mile. So that saves us, the trips from vendor that we went out to bid for, that has cut the trips in half. So a four hundred dollar trip is now at two hundred dollars. On page sixteen. I'm sorry.
You have to speak, try to speak up.
Yeah, so the, the system telephones, is that, is that something that we control, or is that part of the town?
The telephones?
System telephone.
That's something we control, that's, that line item, telephone, I'm sorry, I skipped over that, I'm sorry, Jeff. That's like the Comcast, Verizon, there are telephone lines, our trunk lines that come in here, and there's a couple, there's one other one that handles our technology. Off the top of my head, I don't know which one it is, but I can give you a breakdown at the next meeting.
No, I don't, I don't need a breakdown, I'm just curious if we have to be aligned with the town, or if we can, at some point, explore VIP or something like that? And under twenty-five thousand dollars, seems like quite a long amount.
Yeah.
I guess, if I understand you correctly, Paul, so the internet access?
Yeah, all that stuff is in there.
Is included in there?
That, all the internet, right, that's why, there's one other vendor that I, off the top of my head, it has to do with the technology. But Comcast, Verizon, that, all that technology is on that line.
Okay.
But I can get, I'll get a breakdown of that.
Yeah, I appreciate it. And then, on that same page.
Oh, yes, you had to, okay.
At the bottom?
Thank you, thank you, I'm trying to say paper here. The Quashnet building, that's the eighty-one thousand for the, for the vendor, the architect that you had agreed to some time ago. The eighty-one thousand, we have expended sixty-eight thousand nine seventy-four, we have encumbered twelve thousand twenty-six. As they complete their phases, they bill us, so that's, that's how we come up with that particular amount, but it is encumbered. And the six, six thousand one hundred and six dollars and thirty-two cents, if you remember at our prior meeting, I said that one of the rooms at the high school had to be carpeted, was it carpeted or tiled?
It was carpeted, it changed to tile.
It was carpeted, and it was a five oh four situation, okay? So that's the carpeting, and again, in the transfers, there'll be money to cover that.
Okay, thank you.
Going on to page sixteen, Chris had a question on the first one, the balance on the superintendent's line, one hundred and seventy-four oh two three sixty-seven. And if you notice there, that the year expended to date is three hundred and thirty-one thousand five hundred and thirty-eight dollars and sixty-seven cents. I don't want you to think that the superintendent, that's the superintendent's salary. So you'll notice just down below that, that the assistant superintendent position was not filled, that, that, part of that three hundred and thirty-one is the two hundred and fifteen thousand. And the balance is made up, as I had stated earlier, people putting off their retirements, there weren't as many buybacks. The total buyback this year, there were eight retirees, not every retiree gets a buyback. And the total buybacks, I believe, on the next page was the question, came to forty-three thousand three hundred twenty-nine dollars. So the balance, excuse me, the balance of that went to, the balance of that went to that legal settlement that we had to make of the two hundred and fifteen thousand. That's why there's only a transfer of forty thousand dollars. We're going to get to some other questions that the chairman had as we work, work through this. On page seventeen, which is the Coombs School, he just, you'll start, those, the retirements are built into the salaries. When we get to the substitute teachers at the high schools, and this is quite interesting, because I attend, I attended a conference next week. The reason why the high school is so high is we had a number of long-term, long-term substitutes. We had some health issues up there, we had some pregnancies, some operations and so forth. And the state is now saying that they, I guess he wants to track all the long-term subs, anybody that's over thirty days. You know, in other words, they want to track the money, they want to track the money.
They want to track the money, or the money and the number?
Money right now, but it's going to come to numbers. That's coming in two thousand, sorry, two thousand eighteen, the twenty, the FY eighteen.
So next year, you have to.
We're going to do a test this year, you know, they're going to let it kind of slide this year, but then, you know, we're going to, in eighteen, they're going to want to see the truth again. Again, there was a question on the guidance clerk, I have to get back to you on that, I don't know why that's.
On page eighteen, Paul, I had a question in regard to paraprofessionals.
Oh, yes, yeah, that paraprofessional, no, that position did not get filled.
Okay.
But it is going to get filled next year.
Okay.
Because we have a group going up there, again, it's a sped thing that, it's constantly changing.
Okay, well, that's, it looked like it didn't get filled, so.
No, it didn't get filled.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question, if we could backtrack to page seventeen real quick.
Sure.
And I know this has come up in the past, and maybe in my old age, my memory's getting bad, but the Casey Coombs chairperson, what is that again? And why is it at two hundred percent?
Oh, these are the, these are the eleven, these are your.
Oh, there's not eleven of them, but, so there's four of them. That's per the contract, I'm not sure about that amount, oh yeah, the eleven thousand, so there's a elementary curriculum chairperson for math, for ELA, or STEM, and for social emotional. And per the contract, if you divide eleven by four, that is the stipend.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I think there were, it might have been eleven.
There should be some at the Quash as well.
Yeah, I think.
Yeah, that was the only one that I noticed that was significantly over what was budgeted, so the other ones were right on target.
We might have added one there.
Well, in the previous year, we had grade level leaders, and we switched to curriculum chair, and because that is delineated in the contract, that changed.
Okay.
That is right, thank you.
And I'll get back to you on that guidance clerk.
Okay.
Now, there any questions on pages twenty, oh, on page twenty, and I have done, on page twenty-one, there was a question about the network administrator. If you look down below, network support, Chris, you had a question on that, we just moved, we charged them up above, that's why there's a balance at the one seventy-six, that's going to offset.
Okay.
And again, again, we're looking at balances, bottom line balances. Any questions on twenty-three?
Yeah, I had a question, question on twenty-three?
Yeah, go ahead, I don't.
Oh, the sped director, other?
Correct, that, part of that is contractual obligations, that the, you know, she gets paid for mileage and so forth. And I'll have to get you a list of every, every online.
Okay.
If you go to twenty-four, which is salaries. You can see, there's only one negative there, the rest will probably get canceled, you know, at the end of the year, if they're off. And it's a substitute line, as I said in the past, I try to do the best I can with the substitutes. I try to control the budget so that we don't really send something down to Town Hall that doesn't stay within somewhat parameters. So sometimes they go over, but you make it up in another area on the substitute. We did go over on substitutes this year, that's another piece that, part of the transfer from the spend side to the salary side. But I thought, just a movement of forty thousand dollars, that's what we're projecting next month, to move from expenses to salary to cover the two hundred and fifteen thousand, plus the overage in the substitutes of a thirty thousand, so you're talking about a two hundred and forty-five thousand dollar possible shortfall on the salary side, which will only have to move forty thousand dollars. Well, part of it was made up by the assistant superintendent. Any other questions on the appropriations?
I guess a question, and I didn't give this to you earlier.
Go ahead.
Paul, on page twenty-six, legal services?
Did we go where?
Legal services.
Legal services, you remember at the last meeting, it was twenty thousand dollars worth of deductibles on three of the cases, without discussing the cases?
Right. So I guess that's what I wanted to make sure, because I know we have some that are ongoing, that we've encumbered our deductibles for those ongoing litigation.
Not litigations that I know about.
Like the difference between the cases that end up through the insurance company versus just our attorney who helps with the other advice, but we already, that's a one-time.
That's a one-time.
Three things?
Okay.
No, that's one time, we pay the deductible.
Okay.
So that's one time. I do stay on top of the school, your legal people, to make sure that they get their bills in prior to the close of the fiscal year. We try to estimate, you'll notice that we still have encumbered there seven thousand one hundred forty-three dollars and eighty-nine cents.
Right.
I will check tomorrow to find out where we are, and I know we try to, you know, get that bill, you know, or at least a projection on the June bill.
Okay.
It's going to be, so, and we still have eleven hundred and thirty dollars on the balance side.
Okay.
So those bills have not been impacted, the big impact was, as I mentioned at the last meeting, the twenty thousand dollars, and that's a one-time shot.
All right, thank you. All right, any other questions on the, the detailed expenditures and budget? And then, let's go on with the grants.
Okay, going into the grants, total amount on the grants, you'll notice that Title One, we have total revenue of one hundred and ninety-nine eight sixty, expenditures one forty-three five sixty-eight. We're going to, because that is a twenty-seven month grant, we can roll over, we, we're going to roll over into the next fiscal year approximately thirty, thirty-two thousand dollars, which will be expended in FY nineteen, FY eighteen, so it will help the budget, the personnel budget moving into FY eighteen. Title Two A is totally expended, the rest of the funds are in, the difference that you see there is the MTRS, mass teachers retirement, we have to pay that on the grants. Ninety-four one forty-two, we are going to most likely, a lot of that is expended during the summer, we have a summer program. The, we will be doing drawdowns this month, and in June, July, and August in ninety-four one forty-two. If we have any funds left over there, that is another twenty-seven month grant. What will happen is, we can take it over one year, so.
Paul, is that, is that part of the grant that I believe, what was it, last year, that Gus Stickley had?
No.
Does that show up on here at all?
No, no, he's not, he has no grants this year.
Okay, but last year would have shown up here.
Yeah, it did show up here.
Okay.
Yeah, it did, it wasn't a big grant, I want to say it was around fourteen hundred dollars.
Yeah.
It was around that, and it was a one, and he got, right, he got one shot, in other words, he got the fourteen hundred right up front.
Okay. Too bad he doesn't get to do that again, so.
Yeah, that, no, he doesn't.
That was a challenging program.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, he's not choosing to do that again.
Seemed like it might have been.
On the next one, the sped improvement grant, number two seventy-four, you notice that we have the UAT amount of twenty-three thousand five eighty-two. You notice we only received thirteen thousand five eighty-two, I'm waiting for the Department of Education to upload the additional ten thousand dollars, which we use as part of our professional development. And the, can you help me out on this one, the NR?
For the?
The ten, the ten thousand dollars.
Oh, North River Collaborative?
Well, part of it, yeah, so, so that will come up, that's why it looks like it's over, it's overextended. The Perkins Grant, all the money is in, we just haven't expended it all, he does have it encumbered, just hasn't expended it. The early childhood, the funds are still coming in, the state, these early childhood grants, you file them, they're very slow in getting the money in. The Indian Ed, you'll notice, we will be expending the fifty-three thousand one seventeen, but I can only draw that down on a, almost on a daily basis, so. Circuit breaker, we have received two hundred and ninety-two thousand three eighty-nine, we should have received another payment, and then we'll receive one more circuit breaker payment on June third. Any questions on the state and federal grants? And I am concerned about what those federal grants down the road, what's going to happen to those. We see, we keep seeing Title One decrease, so whatever. Moving on to the revolving accounts, there weren't too many changes. We did have athletic gate receipts, seven thousand six, six hundred and sixty-seven dollars, these were receipts from a baseball softball tournament that they, they ran. All expenses are taken out of the revolving account, the money comes in. All expenses are taken out of the revolving account. The money comes in, the money goes out. A lost book account, preschool account, tuition receipts. They come in little at a time. In the school of choice, if you refer to the last page, page 30, again, there hasn't really been too much activity. 554, we're at 554, 325, 49. I did file for additional funds for school choice students that have special needs. As I told you, you can, I work with the sped director, we get that filled out. It's not as high this year as it has been in the past, I believe. It's going to be around $29,000 if we get 100%. It's an appropriation, so we may not get that much, but whatever we get, we'll go into that lineup. On page 29, I have a budget transfer. These are, again, going back to the technology area, supplies and so forth, just taking bits and pieces and transferring to cover up some of those items. I need a vote. There are no questions. These are just to handle the deficits.
Move to approve transfer, number 17-08.
Second.
Discussion. Paul, I thought when I looked at, yeah, so when I looked at the postage, it was negative $5,000.
Right.
We're moving $12,000. So for the year, we will have spent $22,000 for postage?
It's a meter. It's a meter. And if I have funds at the end of the year, I usually put it into, some into postage. Because I probably won't be able to have those funds next year on the budget that we have. I'm trying to get FY 18. I'm trying to close out 17, and I'm having, I got contracts that are not settled yet, so I don't want to get into.
Okay. No, not.
Not that I'm, I'm just.
Just trying to understand.
One year, and we can make up something this year.
That's fine.
So I need a vote?
All right. A motion to.
Seconded, all right.
Seconded. Any further discussion? Jeff, any questions? Nope. Okay. Nicole, how do you vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
All right. So unanimous?
Okay. And I have, under other. If you remember at the last meeting, finance meeting last month, we talked about the air conditioning, three rooms at the high school that have no ventilation, they have no windows. And the director of facilities had given a, an estimate of $15,000 to $25,000. And what they, and in all fairness, in all fairness, we were looking at the split units, you know, the typical split units, and those units are too small to do those size rooms. So the estimate, which was just handed to you, of $46,800 to do those three rooms. If I have approval tonight, the money will come out of the balance of the special ed transportation that we saved this year to do those, to do those three rooms.
So I would assume that you have projected that we are going to have, we're not going to have, you know, be in the hole for this year's budget at all?
No, no.
Even close?
We're going to close out pretty good this year.
Okay.
And part of it is, part of it is.
I know next year's a different story.
Yeah, it's a whole different story.
I know that.
Yeah, I'll tell you that. The whole, this is like minor leagues, we're going to major leagues next year. The thing that helped us out, helped us out this year, but is going to affect us next year, are the people pushing off their retirements. We didn't have the buybacks that we had listed. There were a number of teachers that pushed it off. And we're almost, we're at the point, next year, we're pretty much at the maximum on what we projected to budget for the buybacks, the contractual buybacks for the teachers. Pretty much right there. So what I'd like is, I'd like a vote from the committee to move forward on this.
How many quotes did we get?
Well, let me, let me, you know, this is on the town side. And this is the contractor that they use for the HVAC. And the director of the DPW and the, and the facility said that they can do this under that, under the contract that they have with this HVAC person. If we do it any other way, it's a formal bid. And again, it's on their side. It's not on my side.
Well, it's on our side in regard to paying for.
As far as the funds, that, right, but that does not set the, where the funds come from are not, you know, that's not, I'm kind of walking down a path that I have to be very careful. So they said that they could do it through, these questions, let me, let me say this. The questions did come up. They were questioned. And they said to do it, and do it quickly and get it done. This was, you know, they could do it through their contract.
So this would be done over the summer?
No. I would, I would start this tomorrow.
And how long does it take to do?
I'd have, I'll get back to you on that. But I would, once it's authorized here tonight, I told the director of facilities that I would get back to him first thing in the morning, if there was a go or not go. But as far as the, the, they feel that they can use their contract. That's their decision, not my decision.
And only one candidate for me, if everybody can hear me. I thought we were moving away from doing this anymore.
Right.
I'm just asking a question. I'm just one person out of five. I'm just saying, I thought, I thought we had a discussion before that we're no longer going to do infrastructure improvement. I mean, what does this do to the MOU that we're trying to get with DPW? I mean, every time we do something like this, we're just, you know, making more president that any extra money we got can go into somebody else's budget on the town side for maintenance of buildings that we're not responsible for.
Right, but this is a maintenance, this is basically an improvement that.
I agree with that. That was the wrong choice of words. I agree with that. But also, I mean, building improvement's not our responsibility either, except for windows and sockets.
My goodness, chairman. So, because I remember, last time we talked at this, at the meeting about this, I asked the same type of question. And although it is an improvement, it does also fall in line with the fact that there's health risks and stuff involved. So it's, it's an improvement, but it's a necessary improvement, you know, obviously for like health reasons and stuff, which is not something that can be overlooked. And I agree with, you know, 100% with what Jeff's saying. But what you had mentioned last time, I guess the only, aside from the fact that it needs to be done, you know, because we don't want people having health issues, the only other reason why I don't really have a huge issue with it is because it's the end of the year. So if, whether we turn the money back to the town or we pay for it, either way, it's the same pool of money, like you had explained. If this was, say, the beginning of the year or the middle of the year.
Couldn't do it.
It would be a different story. But as I do agree, and I don't want to set a precedent, keep doing this over and over again, because it is the end of the year and it is kind of a health risk and all that other stuff, then it is what it is.
Jeff, just, just to address it this way, if I didn't have those funds left over in that sped transportation, we wouldn't be talking about this. Now, we could turn this money back to the town on June 30th, and you could go down to the town and say, would you put in the air conditioning in those three rooms? You could request that the town do it, and now that fund, that fund, the funds, the town manager can determine whether he wants to use those funds, that we turn back to do that.
Right. So we would be at the mercy of the town manager and the board of selectmen to decide.
Favorably true.
Whether or not they felt that it was necessary to air condition those three rooms. Versus us being able to be proactive and make our own decision.
Correct.
Does that help clarify it a little bit, Jeff?
Oh, I mean, I don't need clarification. I mean, I got you. I mean, the elevator at the high school was DDA problem. The batting cage was no life of the Title IX issue. I mean, this keeps going on and on and on. Every time that we have something that is, we have to legally repair, we are the ones that have to jump through hoops and spend money that we hope will not be spent in the last month of the school year to get it fixed. I mean, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not discussing that we all say no. I don't want anybody to have health and health issues either, but it, what's been happening, it seems that we all talk about how we're done with this, especially during the budget discussion with the town manager right in front of us. We're done doing this. We can't take stuff out of, you know, out of school choice. We can't keep doing maintenance. We're going to get an MOU in place. The next time something comes up, we pay for it. So we either have to put our money where our mouth is, or just shut up and do it anytime that we're after doing it, I think. But again, I'm going to go on mute. Thank you very much for your comments.
We appreciate, as always, Jeff, your comments. I mean, personally, personally, I agree with everything that's been said. You know, if it wasn't the end of the year, and we are determining that we have these funds available that would be turned back in any other form to the town, and then we wouldn't have any say in regard to getting this work done. And as far as I know, there's no imminent plan to air condition any of the three schools, although everyone, I would think, agrees that it is necessary. So I guess, do I have a motion to either approve or disapprove Paul's request to move forward with this project?
I don't know if it's my request.
What's the, somebody's request?
I'll take it. It's my request.
At a point of collaboration, I would like to move to encumber the amount requested by the business manager to pay for, I believe, three air conditioners for the high school.
Correct. Three rooms. Three rooms.
Three rooms, Chris.
I second.
Okay. So we have a motion to move forward, encumber the funds for this project. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Nicole?
Yes.
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 Yes?
Yes.
Unanimous. Okay. Tomorrow morning, I expect to see a crane.
I'll work as quickly as I can.
67 in that room tomorrow.
All right. Anything else, Paul, that you were wanting to bring forward? All right. Next item was just a quick update in regard to what the next steps are for the Quashnet project. So Patty?
So this is coming from DPW Director Catherine Laurent. So Siva, who is our OPM, our owner's project manager, she has asked him to forward to her the contracts for his services as well as Raymond Design Associates for signature. The funding agreement with the MSBA will also need to be signed. She says hopefully all of this will happen within the next two to three weeks. Raymond Design Associates will then resume work on their plans, and the next submission of plans to MSBA is at the 60% level. She says she would expect the subcommittee to meet to review them before they are submitted. So that's the group of us who gets input into those decisions. And she's asked Siva when such a meeting might be expected. She's waiting to hear back from him. And in the bigger timeframe, they are looking at issuance for a bid for construction in the fall of '17.
Okay. Any questions? The duck. Okay. Next item is tuition waivers. Superintendent House?
So you have, or I have a letter requesting the, that two children from this family be allowed to remain in MASH before the balance of the year. One of the students is currently in the ninth grade, and one is in the first grade. They currently are, had to move to Ktuit. And if this is approved, the family will be told, however, that for the ninth grader, there are choice seats for next year in grade 10, so he would have a chance to apply for that. But there are no choice seats in grade 2, so that student will only be allowed to stay through this year. So that is for MD and DS.
So just to add a little color, and maybe this is for Nicole's purposes. The committee speci, well, the superintendent meets with the principals and determines in the spring, I think it was?
February.
February. What the capacity is by class, by grade for choice seats. And there, and then the committee reviews and approves that recommendation. Those seats are then available first for continuing students, right?
They can apply. Oh, no. Once you're in choice, you're always in choice. They're not part of that.
Okay. So this is for new ones. They have to apply for it. And if we have seats available, then, you know, it's, they're fine. If we don't have enough seats and more people apply, then it is a lottery. If we were to open, unfortunately, in this situation where we don't have enough seats available, if we were to open more seats, then we would have to look at anyone who applies, would be given an opportunity, and then we'd have a lottery. So. would be given an opportunity, and then we'd have a lottery, so we can't specify, we're going to add a seat for a particular person. Okay? Hopefully I didn't muddy that up for you.
June first is when the first window for school choice opens, we do one month, and then if there's seats remaining, it remains open for another month for any other changes.
So what happens if, right now, there's no seats for second grade, but come fall, seats emerge? Can people apply for a, a grade where there are no advertised seats, so that they're effectively put on a waiting list, or not?
No, it's based on what was determined by the school committee at this, at this vote. So, you know, there's always students coming in, that's why the principals sort of pick and choose, they kind of know what an average income might, incoming group might be in the summer, so, and I know the current first going into second is big.
Yeah. Hundred forty or something like that.
So we use any of that flux to accommodate new students in the district?
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Yeah.
It's, you know, it's definitely not an ideal for, because the majority of kids who choice with us had been with us at some point, so.
So that, are you going to vote them all together, or one of the town?
We should do, this is all one family, right?
Well, the first, yeah, this one was.
Yeah. I think we can do them all.
Chairman, if I could just say one more thing, too, just to clarify for your purposes, too, so with these waivers, correct if I'm wrong, there is, there's no budget impact for this year. It's, so we're waiving the rest of the tuition, so they're not actually put into school choice. So just like a school choice, student is grandfathered in and they're good for, these students are just allowed to stay the rest of the year, so if they want a school choice, they have to apply, they're not getting put into a school choice by this vote.
Got you.
And the letters they receive are clear about, yes, apply for school choice beginning to first, or no, there's no, you, you have to enroll your child in the other town, or find someplace here.
But there's always an opportunity for them to come back the following year, we have seats, so.
So do you want to do the KM as well?
Yeah, well, I think we can do the whole family.
This is another family.
Oh, KM.
KM's a different one.
Well, let's do the, the vote on the first one, then. So this is for tuition waiver for the rest of the school year for MD and DS.
So moved?
Hearing none. Any further discussion? Nicole, how do you vote?
Yes.
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 All right, so unanimously approved. KM?
Okay, and the other one, this student is currently in grade ten, they have had to relocate to East Falmouth. She is hoping to continue on, and there are five choice seats for next year in grade eleven, that hopefully she'd be able to get one of those, but they are just asking for tuition waiver for the balance of this year.
Okay. You have a motion?
Motion to approve tuition waiver for KM, grade ten, for the remainder of 2017.
Second.
Have a motion on second, any further discussion? Hearing none, Nicole?
Yes.
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 Unanimous.
Thank you.
All right. Next item on the agenda, this is just for informational purposes, but since we do have one of our major contracts that is not settled, and we have level funding budget for FY eighteen, I just wanted to point out that if the committee so chose that the deadline for putting the article on the October town meeting warrant in regard to potential funding for any contracts is July tenth. July tenth, that it would have to be submitted to the town manager. So, question?
Not a question, a comment. I'm going on memory, I thought that the town manager or the board of selectmen could put an article on the warrant up to like forty-five days before the actual vote, or am I?
Yes, they, they can, but this is us submitting a article. So this would be similar to if you were at town meeting or looked at the town meeting warrant, there were a number of town contracts that.
Were blank.
That were, didn't get settled by the time the warrant was issued, and that subsequently got settled or were in the process of getting settled. And the town manager was requesting additional appropriation to be able to cover those specific contracts. Now, I'm not saying that we need it, I'm just making you aware of all options, okay? Any questions, Jeff? Clear on that? Okay.
Did you want to pop up to the graduation one?
Oh, we skipped over that.
That's what I thought you started talking about.
No, I'm sorry.
October warrant had something to do with graduation.
Yes, we're postponing a graduation.
Just to make sure that you know that it starts at ten, you should have, right there is a preferred parking pass for yourself, and the labels are in the books already, but if you'd like to go to the main office by around nine fifteen AM, there will be munchies.
Okay. So, nine fifteen or so?
So no stickers in the books this year? We're not putting them in?
They're in there, well, you didn't do it last year either.
Somebody else did.
That's right, we didn't.
But this year, I think Gail did it, but, yeah.
Patty, can you say the last thing you said again?
That you don't have to put stickers in the books this year, it's all set.
Remember how?
You say something about nine AM?
Oh, nine fifteen.
Yeah.
Starts at ten, and since you don't have to put stickers in, you can just, you know, hang out.
Nine fifteen, got it, all right.
Okay. Any other items that need to be brought forward to the committee at this point?
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to thank you and Patty for setting this up, but they took time out of their busy schedules yesterday to make sure that the electronic gorman worked, so I appreciate everybody's patience, it's kind of nice to test this out anyway, and we can probably get the bugs out of it, so that people can use this in the future. I know there's going to be time when people are going to be on travel for other business, but they still want to attend, so again, thank you, Patty and Patty.
Well, you're, you're welcome, and one, we both learned something new in regard to it, and still like to work the, the bugs out of this.
We'll get it worked out.
So that we don't have the latency on the audio, but other than that, I think it works okay.
Good, in my head, how big is my head, actually?
It's pretty huge.
You're looking good, you look good.
Two feet.
Just, just be grateful that these aren't those high resolution televisions where you can see more than you want.
Yeah, they need to be closed up in high definition.
Yeah, exactly. All right, so we're going to go into executive session here.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry.
Yes.
My apologies, one more thing, is there any news on Mashpee TV? Because we still don't have a Mashpee TV channel.
What? What's, what's your question?
Has there been any status on Mashpee TV? I know we haven't had an educational channel for, I don't know, probably a couple weeks, and I know it's not working tonight, it's all just fog.
Oh, you're talking about channel twenty-two?
Correct.
You're going to look at it tomorrow?
Bill's going to look at it tomorrow.
All right.
I didn't, didn't know it was, that there was a problem.
I actually just assumed there was already something, I just, I didn't know, but.
Okay. Is it, is it just?
It probably needs a server reboot.
It's a server reboot there, Jeff.
Well, is it just?
Exactly.
Is it, yeah, is it just our channel that's down, or?
Yes.
Lucky us.
I didn't know it myself, but the others are working fine.
Okay. Well, thank you, thank you for informing us.
May I say something else about this?
Sure.
I just received some bids for a new server that we will be hopefully getting in very soon. What's there now is some software that's running on Windows ninety-five.
What? Oh, my computer will work.
Wow.
Exactly.
Thank you.
It's not even XP, it's ninety-five, wow. I didn't, didn't know anything was still running on ninety-five, well.
It's not.
No, it's not.
Okay, Jeff, any other questions or comments?
No, my apologies.
Nope, that's, that's fine. All right.
Move to adjourn the regular meeting and enter into executive session, not to return to open meeting. For purposes of negotiation for non-using personnel and strategy for negotiation with Unit Eight, sorry.
All right, so Jeff, you're going to stay on the line for the first one, and then?
Yes, sir, and then I'll jump off.
Okay, thank you. All right. Bill, thank you.